Pledge. People.
Pledge your name.
Pledge to the flag, United States of America, and to be a valid citizen, one nation under God, in this law of liberty and justice. Thank you. Roka.
You didn't get David.
Here.
Benjamin Yu. Charles Woltin.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Here.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Item two, any additions or corrections to the agenda? Commissioners?
I don't have any. I can only approve these.
Item three, public comment. Is there any public comment on agenda items in the room? Agenda items only? Any public comment on the phone? Item four, appointments. A, we have Rebecca Younger, Executive Director, Northern Michigan Children's Assessment Center. Good morning.
Morning.
Nice to see you.
It's another year. Pass those around. Wanted to give you another annual update on all the great work that we are doing at the Children's Assessment Center this year, and thank you for your support and hopefully continued support for the upcoming years. Just kind of review a little bit for interviews, you'll see. We went up in interviews last year, we're seeing a little over one kid a week coming through the center whenever there's allegations of abuse and neglect. So I'm sure you remember that anytime law enforcement or protective services receives an allegation that reaches that potential criminal charges, sexual abuse, severe physical abuse, those kids are being interviewed at our center. So we had sixty-six kids last year come through on allegations of abuse. So those kids, every family that comes through, if you look at the advocacy services, I have two advocates. Those advocates are meeting with those families and providing all the support that they need as far as, sadly, a lot of times these kids, when they come through the center, whatever the allegation might be, is just one issue maybe that family's dealing with. It might be housing issues, there might be domestic violence, drug use, just, you know, custody issues. So, you know, our advocates are working with those families to just ensure that they're receiving all the support and services that they need. Along those same lines then, I have three full-time therapists who are providing mental health services for these kids. So the kids are, you know, coming through the center, we're reaching out and providing as much mental health services that we can. We have a pediatrician, she continues to come to the center, provides all of our medical exams. Every, any child that comes through the center, we offer a medical exam. Whether the abuse happened five days ago, whether it happened two years ago. We know how important it is to reassure these kids that their bodies are okay. Sadly, a lot of these kids that are abused at a young age, when they start hitting puberty, even if the abuse has stopped, they still question if they're okay. Was their body harmed? Was there something wrong with them? Can people tell that they were abused? So it's really important for these kids to have medical exams. And then we work real closely with our partners, with law enforcement and prosecutors, to make sure if kids are being abused and we're substantiating those cases, that we can build that case to be able to go to court and prosecute. So, so just as much as we want to make sure that kids are being interviewed in a way that's gathering the most accurate information. One of my forensic interviewers just came back from Huntsville, Alabama. We ensure that they get the most up-to-date training, that it's evidence-based, that best practices. So they're interviewing these kids and making sure they're getting the accurate information. So when we are substantiating cases, we're building that case to go to court for prosecution. Couple of things that we are working on, some exciting things is also what I would love to see, actually, I was just talking to the sheriff and saying, we would love to see a day, you know, that we don't have to interview kids. And a couple of things that we have to do to make that happen is educate the community on the importance of reporting abuse and neglect. We're not going to stop it if we can't get these cases investigated and stop offenders from abusing kids. We have to train the community on making those reports, keeping kids safe, and then also educating kids. So we just received some funding last year. We started in Crawford, we do cover six counties. We started in Crawford last year, I know we're going to be in Ross Common Schools this upcoming year. And I know we are slowly starting to reach out to the other schools, we're doing a needs assessment with Ogumah County, reaching out to the elementary schools and finding out what kind of curriculum they might have in their schools, teaching kids body safety. So this program is called Kids Have Rights, it's a curriculum that teaches kindergarten through fourth grade. The importance of what, we call them like selfish touches, unwanted touches, the touches to our body parts that are inappropriate and not okay. So it's outside of, you know, bathing and going to the doctor and teaching kids. So as much as it is important to teach kids, if someone violates those body safety rules and someone is touching them inappropriately, it's important to tell. But also a big part of this program is teaching kids to trust their gut instincts and teaching kids that if they're in a situation where someone feels uncomfortable, it's important to find a safe adult and talk to a safe adult about that. Because we know there's grooming that happens prior to starting. When I was a forensic interviewer, I was on a committee that created this program down in Kent County, and I spent a year doing some research, and what I was doing in my interviews was asking kids, once they, if they were disclosing abuse, I was asking them, prior to the inappropriate touching, were there things that happened to make you feel uncomfortable? And a lot of the kids were talking about how maybe it was just a hug that was too long or something that somebody said to them that made them feel uncomfortable, or just some type of behavior that it just, they knew was inappropriate, but they didn't know what to do with that information. So teaching kids, if you're in a situation where someone's making you feel uncomfortable, find a safe adult to talk to. And then that adult can help you assess if this is a safe situation, or do we have to put some safety issues in place? So with this bookmark, every child goes home with this bookmark, what we do is we help them identify that there's a lot of safe people that you can talk to. Maybe somebody in your home, you know, if there's a safe person in your home you can talk to. Maybe there's not, who's at school can you talk to? Do you belong to a service group? Do you play sports? Do you go to church? You know, who can we identify? Your best friend's parent, a neighbor, you know, a relative. So really making sure kids leave this program knowing there's a lot of safe people for them to talk to. With the commitment that we get from our counties, we're able to continue these services. You know, we see, I think, I just did our annual report, out of all six counties, we're just shy of four hundred kids that come through the center on an annual basis. So the professional service agreement that we have with Ogumah County, you know, we continue working with protective services and with law enforcement to ensure that these kids are being interviewed in a trauma-safe environment by specially-trained forensic interviewers, making sure that we get the most accurate information from kids, and then also providing all those follow-up services. You know, law enforcement's not working with these families to make sure they're into counseling and get medical exams and provide that support. So that's where we partner with them. So that coordination with our partners to ensure that all these families are getting the support that they need. We provide all the medicals, the non-acute and the acute exams. We had seven acute exams come through our center last year from Ogumah County. That's when any child or an adult is disclosing that that sexual assault happened within a five-day timeframe. So I have nurses and advocates that are on calls twenty-four-seven who responds to those exams. So instead of running to the emergency room, setting in the environment, chaotic environment of the emergency room, they're getting that individual attention from a sexual assault nurse exam. These exams take, well, we had one in Iosco last night, and the nurse texted me afterwards and she was there three and a half hours. So you're not going to get that attention in the emergency room. Our pediatrician schedules each exam, even our non-acute exams for an hour. So she's ensuring that that parent, that caretaker and the child, they get the attention that they need. The exam in and of itself might take twenty minutes, but the whole appointment to make sure that we're providing that family with support. So we're ensuring that all those medical needs are being met, providing the counseling services and the advocacy services for those families. So the support that we get from you provides those services for these families in Ogumah County, free of charge. So we don't bill insurance, we don't bill the parent, all those services are free of charge. So I can't thank you enough for your support to allow us to do what we do, we couldn't do it. I wouldn't be able to hire the staff, we wouldn't be able to continue providing that support without our community partners. So I appreciate that, and one of the things I pulled out, we've had a lot of cases just getting caught up from COVID, now that courts are back in and we've been in court. A lot of cases are going to jury trials, we've had great, great success with our cases. A little girl who was being sexually abused who wrote a victim impact statement, and one of the comments she made was, "Your Honor, please make him go to jail for what he did to me. Please protect others, he stole my trust. Please don't let him and his family get away with covering up with what he did. I will never forget what happened, but I will heal from it soon with the support of the Children's Assessment Center. Thank you, Mom and Dad, for believing me and protecting me." So those are the stories that keeps us motivated, keeps us going, and providing the services. So I appreciate your support, thank you. I have this here service agreement. So you can just look that over sign and get it back with me. Any questions?
Commissioners? Commissioner Scott?
No, I'm acquainted with, as I said before, I'm acquainted with the Assessment Center, I know of a couple of cases that went through. I'm full support.
Absolutely. Commissioner Woltz?
Really appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you.
Commissioner Simmons?
I think the assessment individuals already know how I feel about this whole program. I think it's important and I am definitely glad we have that available to these kids.
How much, I just, thank you, thank you for coming, thank you for everything that you guys do. How much do we contribute to this?
Five thousand.
And that's, we're continuing, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Item B, Brian Gilbert, Sheriff, related to correction sergeant position. Morning, guys.
Morning.
Morning, how's everyone?
Good, you?
Good.
Mr. Howard?
Yeah. Morning. We have a promotional position opening in the jail. And it's budgeted, so what I'd like to do is move an individual up who is a very, very good dedicated employee that we have over there. It is already budgeted, and it'll help the facility run a little bit smoother, so another sergeant in there, so we're looking for support for that.
Questions? Commissioners?
The allocations are full.
Commissioner Scott?
We allocated five. Five sergeants. There's five, but we're short one.
We're short one.
Short one.
When I moved out.
He moved out.
I posted it back in August, but we didn't do the interviews until after.
Six allocated?
No. Five. I haven't filled that one since I moved.
Yeah, we haven't.
So it's currently four sergeants?
Correct.
Yeah, currently four, we're asking to fill that fifth one to.
I put it up for posting back in August, but we didn't interview until after you put the promotion freeze on. See, you know, we haven't done, we just, we didn't do the interviews until after you guys, where you can't do the help mission.
I have a question. Commissioner Simmons?
When, when, if you promote this person to sergeant, what was that person's duties before? And how are his duties going to be taken care of now?
His duties before, he's just a regular line officer, he doesn't have all the responsibilities of running the shift, making sure all the right people are following the policies, taking updates, classifying people and moving them to the bags.
Yes?
Yes.
Is that what he did before?
No.
What'd he do before?
He was a regular line officer, housing control and take.
Who's going to take this place?
He's been acting since then. I mean, I've had him doing what he hasn't been promoted.
I understand, but who's going to do that once he's promoted? What he used to do?
You're going to have an opening for a regular officer then?
There's not an opening, he's just been filling in, doing them duties.
Will there be?
Asking, once, once that promotion, you already backfilled below him?
I didn't backfill, but they cut this, he's doing pretty much both, but he's still, they're all doing both right now because they're so short. But he's just going to be the one responsible to make sure everything's being followed and doing all like the classifications and, and doing the updates, making sure people are approved and get released or bonded out, going through the paperwork, making sure they're doing it correctly.
So what you're saying? So just, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So what you're saying is he's going to do the sergeant duties plus the duties he used to do?
Right now, they all are. Because we're so short, there's only two people on a shift, and I can't have people constantly doing housing all day long.
So there's four shifts, is there a sergeant on every shift?
Yeah, so with that one. But he's been, he's been acting as sergeant, but I haven't promoted him yet.
Right.
He's been acting, he's doing the responsibilities, he's just.
Acting as the fifth sergeant.
Correct, he just hasn't been promoted yet.
So there's another, there's a sergeant on every shift?
Yeah, with him acting as sergeant, he's just not promoted to say sergeant. You know what I'm saying?
No, because there's four shifts. And there's four other sergeants.
I have a guy that is in charge of all of them, that used to do what I did.
So he's like the master sergeant?
He runs everybody back there and does all the disciplines and.
And he's daytime.
Correct.
What's the pay difference? Like what does this mean for this individual with the promotion?
I don't know what they top out, probably twenty-four, twenty-four seventy-seven is what he topped out as sergeant, because he's been there nineteen years.
Commissioner Woltz?
How, how are things going right now with Tom over there?
Well, it's going good, I mean, they're filling the spots that need to be filled, I mean, there's overtime because whenever somebody's off, I gotta slide somebody in there.
How many in-county residents do we have right now there?
I didn't look this morning, probably forty's of ours and then eighteen or so, or twenty of us still.
Twenty from us, I suppose.
Eighteen to twenty, I can't remember right, it's like. So that makes sense, yeah. What's that?
Seventy cents.
Is it seventy cent increase?
More than that, it's probably like two dollars. I think it's like, like two dollars and something, I think. I think they top out it wrong.
Are they currently, is this a salary position?
No.
It's still hourly?
Three, three dollars, nine cents.
Everybody, there's no salary positions at all, and you're correct.
Are, are you salary or are you hourly? You're hourly?
Union, hourly.
Oh, okay. I'm not a negotiator.
He's not an administrator, he's just the lieutenant.
Say just.
Administrator is kind of.
So there's a three oh nine increase per hour. That's a pretty big jump.
So currently this officer then, basically since the layoffs, has been doing a lot of jobs that a sergeant would be doing, I mean.
Correct, yeah, because I, yeah, you need somebody there, like on the weekends, there's nobody to move all the people out of intake and facilitate all the releases and all that stuff.
I, I've seen this request come through and you had denied it.
Right, pending your conversation here.
Okay, was there another reason that it was denied? I don't disagree, but I want to see if there was another reason or something else that we were not being told, okay. Any other questions? Comments?
Well, I was understanding this position was already backfilled, and I thought you were adding it to a sixth.
No, no.
Is it necessary to have a sergeant, and I don't understand all of this logistics, but is it necessary to have a sergeant on each shift?
It is necessary, because you need somebody that can make decisions.
Okay.
Aren't there, yeah, because it basically boils down, he's taking on a lot of responsibility when he's so, he has to make the call, because you got a lot of less seniority people that are working that don't know how to make the decisions. When something happens, you have to make the right decision.
So you already have an idea of who this person's going to be?
Yes, I've already promoted him, but it got denied, because I posted it back before you guys, but.
Right, I've seen that.
So I didn't know I had to get approval, because it was all posted back in August, we just didn't get, some things happened where people got sick and stuff, and we didn't get to the interviews.
Does this change anything with this individual, like how the layoffs and everything, does this change anything?
No, no, it's a question, and I'm not sure we could do this, is if he's already doing the work, if this should be a retroactive promotion or not, I'm not even sure we could do that. But it's, the staffing levels are exactly the same in terms of the total numbers. So this person is just going to have a different title now.
And a higher salary.
And a higher, higher wage, yeah.
Yeah.
Questions, comments?
Oh, I do. Does this individual have like a lot of time here with the county?
Nineteen years.
I guess I thought I heard you say.
Did he pass up a chance to go to a, up a level before?
He's never put in for it.
If you got a lower level.
He's never put in.
You got lower senior people already as sergeant.
He's never put in for it before?
Yeah.
But he's ready to do it. I talked with him.
Nineteen years.
He's a very good employee, excellent employee. I can tell you his name if you'd like.
No, I already know.
Okay, you know. He's, he's really qualified.
He sold me a house too.
Okay, yeah, you're right, but yeah, he's very qualified.
I don't, but I don't think that that's, I don't think that that's a, I understand this, I a hundred percent understand this, it's just going to be tough when we just laid off all these individuals and now turning around, and I understand the more job duties and but it's going to be hard to, for me to do this when we just laid off all these individuals.
I, I got one more thing.
So, Commissioner Simmons?
So let's say some of these people come back, back to work, some of them probably already have other positions. The person that filled that, did somebody fill that position before that's not there now?
What position?
The fifth sergeant.
It's Mr. Howard's position. That's never been filled.
I moved myself out and I moved up to sergeant, I wanted to do my job, taking my responsibilities, and I never filled that position.
All right.
It, it's just, I move guys around because of where I want to put them in place to make sure there are things are getting done right.
All right.
Commissioner Woltz?
I may also agree with Commissioner David with obviously this extreme financial situation that we have right in front of us. But also, I think at the end of the day too, we also got to look at liability and at times giving this individual these type of, you know, decision and power-making, and he should have that title. I think liability-wise too, that would be.
I agree with you.
But I guess I don't know, would there be a liability?
Well, I think what Tom said is spot on, he needs somebody there who has the authority to make the decisions in the moment. As you know, anything could change over there with a moment's notice. And it's really the, the idea behind the promotion, the higher pay is because you're taking on that additional responsibility. You would get that, and I frankly would agree with Tom, I think it's necessary for the structure of what they have over there. And it just provides that assurance that somebody who has the knowledge and has the authority to make the decision is there to do it.
You need somebody that's going to step up and make that decision and live by their decision. And he's, he's been there long enough, I'm confident he'd make the right decision. A lot of people, you know, in the work zone, they, they don't like making, you know.
Yeah. That's why they stay in the position.
You know. So anyway, that would, that would help us out tremendously where he needs to be.
Perfect, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Item five, do you need that on for resolution?
No, your discussion here was the intent, and if you weren't going to fill the position, then we would do one, that was classified.
What's that?
You have a layoff recall. You have a resignation, Tom.
Yeah, yeah, one of my officers took another job down at Aeronet. So am I allowed to bring back the next one in line? That, that, that would be the sequencing, but you've got to get the blessing from the board here to fill the job.
What just happened?
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know if I had to.
I think I seen the, I seen that they come through.
I saw the thing come through too.
I was wondering if you're going to.
And that was a.
Well, I was waiting for the public, I didn't know if I could do it without it being on.
That's okay, the, the, that person had some longevity too. Here, correct?
Yes. And he liked to hear, but he's not sure. He's nervous that something was going to happen, he's going to lose his job, and it's a full-time job down there, they offered him, it's more pay. So he decided to go, he's a great officer, and he worked a lot of overtime and he needed it and.
How long was he here?
He was the last one on our list, but he's been here over two years, probably.
Oh, I thought it was longer than that.
No, not longer than that, but he was, he's the next one on the thing, but.
Oh, the layoff list?
The layoff list, if they come to that.
Where's he going, Tom?
He's going to Aeronet. But he's leaving the nineteenth of his last day. I contacted Smith, Smith's the one that told me he wasn't going to look for a job, he was going to let it pan out till the end of the year. So I contacted him and he is available when it's time to come back. He's the next one on the first of the layoffs, he's the first one, so he is available to come back.
He's the first one.
Yes, and I contacted him and he texted me back saying that he's ready. Didn't get anything else, a lot of them took all the jobs already, so they're not even available.
I don't have a problem with that, it's not a new position, you're filling.
Right, just, just fill.
Luckily enough that he waited around.
Yeah, he's the only one that he was going to wait.
He's ready, so we just slip him right in there and move on.
Questions? I don't think there's any issue with that.
I'd just like to see, I'd like to see a resolution on the first question. From the sergeant, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Make sure we're following the, it's correct procedure here, so we don't run into trouble.
On the recall letter, specific language we have to use.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Item five, a committee slash commission reappointments. One Economic Development Corporation, Phil Durst, Denise Knoll, and Mike Inker?
Inker.
Inker, that's not Inker. So it's the wrong, okay.
It's Phil.
Mike's the, the new superintendent at Woodmore.
Oh, is it? Okay. Who's? Go ahead.
He'd be taking over the vacancy that was left by the former superintendent, his name escapes me at the moment. Job, right? So that would, it's kind of a natural fit. Phil's term actually expires at the end of the year, so this will be a renewal, I believe, for six years on the EDC. And in the case of Denise, she has served on a education committee for the EDC for some time and expressed interest in being a part of the EDC board to fulfill that goal. We would actually have to expand the EDC by one member. The statute requires that we have at least nine on the EDC, we currently have eleven. So if she were to be appointed to a new seat, it would be a twelve-seat board, which is completely within the statute, no problem. But it would, and I would word the resolution this way, it would be the creation of a new seat, and it would also be a six-year term.
The EDC is in favor of this, of another member?
They actually recommend it, yes.
Yeah, and I'd like to add to that as an EDC board member. You can see in Phil's notes at the bottom, I mean, Phil's got a lot of passion for what he does, he's a great leader, he's our president, very smart individual. I worked with, I'm sorry, Denise with our workshops for some of the events we had this past fall. She's got a lot of pattern for the area and for getting involved, so she'll be a great, a great new member. And Mike's got a lot to bring to the table, he's just, he's been now with becoming, you know, new roles as Woodmore Prescotts.
Yeah, I read all their applications. I don't see it. And this was a, what was the year's term?
Six-year terms.
Okay. Questions, Commissioners?
No, I don't have any questions. I, in favor.
So we'll put that on for resolution. Item five, two, Parks and Rec Commission, Dan Johnson, Beverly Scott, and Ellen Pugh.
Okay, all three have terms expiring, all three have expressed interest in reappointment, and I believe these are three-year terms. Should be, yeah.
They all know that they're still on.
Yeah, I actually sent emails to everybody and they all replied, which was really good, I was really glad to see that.
I wanted to continue.
Yeah, Deb's been on that board for a long, long time, so a lot of, a lot of history there.
So is Mrs. Pugh, correct?
No, Mrs. Pugh just came on.
Yeah.
Oh, I was thinking.
She must have filled somebody else's spot, but it didn't come back.
And I did talk about, she wouldn't step aside if there was somebody else, but we have nobody else right now, right?
Yeah, Johnson's new, I thought.
Danny, yeah.
He's new also, he's newer than Ellen.
Okay. Item three, Planning Commission, Daniel Dzamzowski, Richard Boshelder, and Penny Pia.
So the unique part of this is the application that Penny sent in. Penny is not a resident, or shall we say, a qualified voter in Ogumah County, but is a qualified voter in a neighboring county. They did attach an attorney opinion that we got earlier in the year about this. In, on the planning commission, you can appoint one non-qualified voter from the county, so long as they're qualified in another community. And Penny had expressed interest in being part of the planning commission. Unfortunately, right now with our two incumbents expressing their interest in reappointment, we wouldn't have an open seat, but like with the EDC, statute would allow you to expand the membership of the planning commission, which is currently at seven, I believe. But it has to be an odd number, it has to be seven, nine, or eleven members. So if we wanted to, or if you wanted to appoint Penny to a voting seat, we would actually then have an open seat that we would advertise and see what we could get for candidates. These are three-year terms, another alternative is you could appoint Penny as an ex-official person, that means she participates but doesn't vote. Not sure that that's the effective level that Penny would like to see if she were appointed. And also later in the agenda, we're going to be talking about a housing commission proposal. Penny sent me a message yesterday that said if she had to pick, she would really prefer the housing commission, should you choose to appoint one because she's. Should you choose to uh, appoint one because she's already gotten a lot of work done in that area and feels she could be most effective there. So that's kind of a mouthful, but I guess the first question is, do you want to expand the planning commission and?
Brian, you wanna come up?
It almost would make sense that we should have this housing commission talk before we continue this talk.
It's up to you.
What's, what's your thoughts on this, Ryan?
Expansion i- is, is a possibility, um. When, when we look at the makeup of the planning commission, the statute um, tells us to work in certain, certain areas, so for instance. We would like to have a representative from agriculture, um, from, from the government. Um, one position that we do not have currently right now is somebody from the education sector, so. So an expansion adding two more, two more seats of that would also allow us to maybe look for somebody that was maybe on the school board. Or, or work for, for the school or one of the school boards here in the county, um, so that is a possibility. Um. There also may be a member right now who maybe not currently is up for reappointment, that may, um. That might be willing to step down as well too, so that's also a possibility, th- there's one member on our list that. I could talk to about, about that. Particularly because this person, um. Is a township official as well too, um. And I'm not sure what their plans are moving forward here in twenty twenty four, um. So there's one person there I could talk to as well, but i- i- there is a couple of options for that. The only downside is, would be from a budget if we had two more, two more members. Um, or required to have at least four meetings a year, is it four meetings a year, so you'd be throwing. Um, what would that be, that'd be eighty dollars per diem for four meetings. And you're increasing the per diem budget portion of that by, you know, three hundred and twenty.
We haven't had a meeting in the last couple of months because of the budget.
Well, we've been cognizant of the budget, so um. A lot of times, we have not seen a lot of business activity in the past year and a half as far as special use. Um, permits and site plan reviews, so generally a lot of times when those happen. Excuse me, that, we, we'll see those in the winter time or towards the end of the winter time when we start getting closer to spring. Um, also part of the reason for that too has been the uncertainty of. What the, the state of Michigan was doing with solar and um, wind energy. Um, I didn't expect them to, I did expect them to preempt us on some of that when it comes to solar and, and uh, wind energy. I didn't expect it so quick, so um, so there are. Reserving some unnecessary meetings probably, um, for, for that discussion as well too, um. Which, which is going to be a big thing, I know you've talked with, um. Consumers, so, so that'll be a big discussion for us as well. Uh, we do have some master plan work that we have to do this year as well too, so I'm trying to, yeah. Be very conscious of the actual number of meetings we have and, and, and that budget as well too.
None of the members have currently voiced that they, they want to step down?
None, none to me, no.
Okay.
Um, but it's never really, hasn't been a conversation, so.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks.
And you wanna come on up?
Thank you.
Morning, morning. I guess, who's taken the uh, the lead on the county housing commission proposal?
I can talk, speak to it, um, Commissioner Wiltsey is heavily involved in the conversation as well. I said Yvonne and John here too, actually had a meeting a couple of months ago and we're conceptualizing. Uh, what this might look like. Uh, at our meeting, when we did meet, we, we're talking originally about an interlocal agreement with the city of West Branch. With West Branch Township and with Ogumon Township to form this joint committee. Uh, the, thinking about it further, that's way more complex than what it really needs to be, this board could establish a housing commission. And you could reserve seats for each of those communities, so, or an eight person board, two from the city, two from the county and two from each of the two townships. Uh, you could make it an odd number and maybe even appoint somebody like Penny as the EDC rep who's really taking the lead on a lot of this. And I think there would be some value to that as well. Um, this would be a body created by this commission, so it'd be another one of our special committees, but you're fully authorized to do that. I've not yet, and I gotta research one more area, I've not yet found any statutory requirements for a housing commission. It's not like the planning commission or the parks commission where there's an actual statute, um, this would be just the creation of the county. Definitely would be, I think, far more aggressive at addressing a vital need in, throughout the county. Uh, we've seen report after report about housing and the lack of housing, uh, affordable housing, and we're not, when we say affordable housing, we're not talking just low income. We're talking middle income as well, it's very scarce, and if the community wants to grow, we're gonna need housing. And the thought was that this group could spearhead that initiative. And again, with people who are already involved, we could hit the ground running and having. Uh, representation, say from the city, there are avenues that the city can approach for grants and guidance from the state that we can't as a county. We're just not equipped to do, uh, and again, the city is already well invested into housing, and so it'd be a great, I think, uh. Uh, membership on that committee to help provide that guidance. So if you're interested in doing this, I could create the resolution that would establish it, we could deal with that even as soon as next week. Uh, and uh, just continue with the process to have members uh, nominated and appointed by you. Uh, by the end of January quite easily and get this committee off and running. Uh, as you know, we also have a, a housing program with the county. I think this would be a great avenue too to help coordinate some of what happens there, now that housing program is primarily for. Uh, housing rehabilitation projects, it's not new housing, but. It's still, I think, a vital uh, part of the community, in fact, with the number of grants that Leanne has achieved here over the last six weeks even. Uh, you can see that there is quite a bit of opportunity and frankly, uh. I don't, I, I think they're a little bit nervous about the number of applicants they're gonna receive versus the amount of money they have. But they definitely have a track record of using all those funds. This would be a great group to act as a sounding board even for Leanne in terms of those programs and maybe even open her up to some others that we don't currently. Uh, participate in, so I think it's a great suggestion. Uh, if you were agreeable to doing that, I haven't talked to everybody directly about uh, abandoning the interlocal agreement concept, but that just seemed too cumbersome. Uh, this way you've got one body that's making the appointments, if you reserve seats for each of the communities, I think they accomplish the same thing and we get it done a lot quicker.
You said the city township EDC and, and who else did you say?
County, the two townships in the city and, you know, just. I don't particularly favor even numbered boards, I think it'll work great for the EDC, but um, I think it's always better to have an odd number in case there is some. Conversation where there isn't total agreement, and I think that's just a, a healthy thing, so. I would suggest reserving a position for the representative from EDC, which I assume would be Penny, but it could be really anybody the EDC might put forward.
Absolutely, I think this is excellent, especially since, yeah, just a second, especially since uh, the rising tide and all that was, was related to the EDC. Commissioner Wiltsey.
Um, could we have Yvonne and John come up and I'd like to get everybody just kinda.
We're getting there, come on up, guys. You guys have all, how long's this discussion been going on?
It's probably been six weeks since we had our meeting, um, but this, this is a subject that's been, um. I, I think at the top of the agenda at the EDC for quite a while now.
I, I've been part of the housing, the state housing talks since November twenty two. And so as um, the state housing projects and um. Ideas have been coming to, to reality and being part of that, and it started to get a little heavier and, and wanting, and needing some more um. Decisions made at the table, I pulled Charlie in because he knows more about the county and, and the do's and the don'ts, and then he pulled Yvonne in. Just to try and be a strong voice at the table to say, yes, we want this, yes, we wanna do this. When it comes to what the state is talking about, and then it's kind of filtered, we need to have a place where we can bring that information to and say, okay, what can we do with it?
She's an excellent resource, she's got. Plus her expertise.
Thank you, thank you, absolutely. So in two thousand eighteen, of course, we worked with Rising Tide, Rising Tide did a housing study.
Yep.
It's the middle income that needs a lot of help, I'm not saying that there's still not a need for lower. But if this community wants to grow, we need housing for middle income. John and I worked very hard on a housing project. Um, since two thousand nineteen, may, well, I think the property was purchased. In two thousand nineteen, yes, and earlier this year, the COVID kind of. Cumber summed everything up, and earlier this year, our main developer that was going to break ground for apartments backed out on us. We had sixty some sites for new construction, um. And then we had a manufacturing company come in and say, we'll buy that land, and it was. A hard choice to make, but we couldn't find any other land for the manufacturing company. Um, we do have several developers that we can work with, that are interested in building, but. John and I didn't feel like we could do it by ourselves anymore, it, too much, and so the idea of having. A housing commission, we reached out to the consulting firm that helped us through Rising Tide. And that was his suggestion also. So that's where we're at.
Mister Donner?
Um. Yeah, as far as the housing issues is obviously, um, been worked on, the city. Went forward with the plans, we had to put a lot of money and time into the development of that, um, housing complex. Um, we had the land sold, we had the developer in line, COVID hit. Um, that put us a couple of years of not being able to do anything. When it came back, prices were extremely high on the materials. At that point, he held off one year waiting to see what would happen. Um, and then this year he just pulled out of it, we've looked around, that's the only developer we've found in four years willing to invest money in our community. Um. And at this point, um, you know, we're trying to look maybe at the manufacturing if they wanna move into that. Um. It, it's just, it's, it's such a huge amount of um, work and time and money to, to. Do a development of that size, um, it's just bigger than the city could take on by itself, so. This committee would be a, a great way to tackle that issue, I believe.
The state has money. That they've previously used for the middle income. Um, they work with the developers, sometimes they'll work with a municipality, and um, in looking at my numbers. We have sold. Through the MLS, we've sold like three new constructions in the last, um. Four months, the, and the bottom line was three fifty nine, and the top was four twenty five. And that's not middle income, that's not what people can afford. The state has a program where they will work with a municipality or a developer, and they will bring money to the table. The numbers have to be right, the, the people buying the house have to have. A certain number of people in the family, a certain income, but it is the middle income, not the lower income. The developer or the municipality would get that, would get so much money. To put back into building other new construction.
Well, the two needs that you hear repeatedly for this community, one is housing and two is childcare.
Yes.
So now that, so that land has been purchased, I think Commissioner Wiltsey gave us that information at the.
We're, we're close.
Oh.
We're close.
Well, I mean, that's gonna be even a bigger need for this. For housing.
Yes.
Middle class, so I think that this would be a, a huge, huge asset, um. Yep, I think this would be a huge asset, and I think that this housing uh, commission is an excellent idea. Versus spinning our wheels, I think this will make everything move forward, and with all of this expertise, um, in the right direction. Uh, Commissioner Wiltsey?
Yeah, we've got a, a lot of good knowledge and has a lot of experience on this, and. You guys have heard me talk about this Northeast Housing Coalition, um, you know, which me and Penny started with, and I'm on the steering committee. Uh, we still don't know where that's gonna come back for us, but. You know, this is a perfect opportunity right now with what we're starting. We get some of this information back, it could be a real big driver to uh, hopefully find some more developers. And this all come together, um, you know, perfectly, get more money from the state, that's above and beyond what uh, Yvonne is talking about. And we don't know what that number's gonna be, but it could be big, and if we have sites that are working, and of course, we're gonna have developers, um, looking. Looking close, we have manufacturing coming in, so this could be just a, a great opportunity and perfect timing for all this.
Uh, my, my recommendation would be as far as the board members, it's making sure there's a, a expertise with grant rate, a grant writer on there. Uh, which I think would be huge, um, we just heard last week that somebody at the Fair Board, Chelsea Clemens, I believe, is, is uh. Writing grants and being successful with the, with the uh, fairgrounds out there, so. Commissioner?
So I hadn't mentioned, Leanne Fisher is part of this, does that mean she won't be your own entity anymore?
Well, she would still, that's still a, a vendor that we have with the county, so there would be no change for her. But it would provide another sounding board, so if there were another grant opportunity that came across her desk, when a lot do. Uh, this would provide a group she could go to and say, what about this, does this fit with the plan that you want, and if so. Start talking about how we're gonna apply and how we implement, right now there's no outlet for her, other than me and.
She does a really good job. And I would hate to have someone come in and all of a sudden now she's not in charge of what she's doing.
This is too separate, they.
She, she's a great asset and that's how we view her.
She is a great asset, um, has done great things for the county, all this is would be almost like a separate entity working with her slash that entity. Resources coming together to do a lot better there than what we're already doing.
Okay. Tim, what do you, so what do you mean from us, you just need a resolution?
So what I would do is prepare a resolution I'll bring to you on Thursday, and once that occurs, I will get with the city and the two townships and say. Nominate a couple of people, of course, you would have two people to nominate from the county as well, and we could get this thing running.
And technically, John and I have not talked to the two townships yet.
Okay.
I mean, Ogumon Township is aware of. The housing issues because of me being at the township meetings all the time, but um, we have not talked to West Branch yet.
No, and, and this is just kind of a, and maybe I'm off, off base here, would the DDA be a member from the D, DDA be an asset to the border at all or no? I, I don't, just, okay, okay, just a thought, Commissioner Simmons. I'm just trying to include everybody as far.
I don't know, well, the DDA is well aware also.
Okay.
Yeah. We have joint DDA meetings through, um, three times a year, so.
And everybody.
So everybody, and it, and, and those meetings are sounding board meetings, they're not meetings where anything is. Um, decided, um, it's more of each DDA. Out of the three, they talk about what they're doing and it's, it's. It's, yes, it's very good for us.
Good, yeah.
Yeah, you guys talk so much, I almost made me forget what I was gonna talk about. Oh, yeah. So when you, when you do this commission, um, there should be a decision about how many people you want on it, what kind of people you want on it and. Where the people are coming from and stuff, so. Um, so when that resolution is done, do we say how many people or do you say? Create a housing commission?
Oh, it'll be very specific. And of course, you can amend it too.
He just said he hasn't found anything statutory on it yet, but he's investigating.
Okay, I just, just asking.
And, and I don't think I'm gonna find anything, frankly, so this, it makes it a lot easier.
I think, I think nine, as you would recommend it, is a good number, uh, if you get much bigger, they can kind of get cumbersome.
Except for the EDC, I think twelve's good.
They, they, they work well as a team, they really do.
Perfect, thanks guys, there'll be more to come on that, I mean, is there a deadline as far as where you're looking at for a resolution is, is?
As quickly as we can get moving.
So who's, who's the primary contact with Tim? Is there one?
Communicate with all three.
Yeah, we've got an email thread going.
Yeah, okay, perfect, thanks guys.
Thank you.
So I guess Penny, I, I guess, if, I mean, you're gonna be pretty busy with, with the housing commission, I mean. Do you want an answer right away for the zoning, are you okay waiting?
I'm okay waiting, mom, it, it's been a while since I put in that application, so I didn't, I didn't really think about it when we started talking about the housing. But when, when we were looking at having a uh, set number and a limited number of people on the housing, it's, you know. Having the right people at the table, and I just kind of said to Tim, if I don't make that cut, then yes, keep me in, in mind for the planning.
And I think it's important to have Penny on the housing.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, perfect, thank you.
And should we be at the meeting on?
I don't think it's necessary, but it's up to you. Absolutely, more, the more the merrier, but I think this is definitely a excellent idea, as I think everybody voiced. Um, zoning board of appeals, Jeremy Card and Richard Ahanger.
Okay, those are two terms that are expiring, both members have expressed interest in continuing and it would be a three year term.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Simmons? Thanks. Item five B, State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program.
Okay, the state did actually get their material to us by the deadline, which was the day after our last meeting, but be that as it may, this is a program that I've talked with Tom Spencer about. Neither of us are really certain about how we fit into this. We've already gone through a cybersecurity analysis that was done just to here the last few months. Uh, Tom has already addressed some of the issues that were brought out in that analysis, but it is a grant program and they're asking for a letter of intent from the county to participate. And both of us agree, we would hate to just leave funding on the table when we don't need to. They've got funding that they want to set aside. They're prioritizing communities that are our size. So we would be, uh, one of the priorities to fund. And our suggestion is that we go ahead and authorize a letter of intent. It's due to the state on the fifteenth. Your meeting is on fourteenth in the morning, so there'll be no problem meeting the deadline. And get our name on the list and we'll then work with the people at the state level to find out exactly what their target is. And if there's anything that we can benefit from, we'll certainly jump right on it.
This is just applying for it, correct? Yeah, absolutely. I don't see any downfall.
We don't want to miss an opportunity.
No, and actually this was just brought up at a township meeting this, this past week, the cybersecurity and them investing because they had some issues in the last month. So, um, Commissioners, questions, comments?
So these, these things that we're signing up, it sounds also you have to have matching, matching funds and some of these grants.
You do. And so if there are investments that we already have budgeted, and I know there's just some ongoing things that we do every year, uh, we could use that as our match to do what, whatever target issues that this group would like us to address.
We don't necessarily, if we are granted it, we don't necessarily have to utilize it.
That's right.
Correct. So we already spent, what did we spend last year on cybersecurity?
There was a grant with Homeland Security and I don't remember how much that was. It was significant. I just don't remember the number.
Was it all grant covered? I thought we had to cover.
I believe it was all grant covered. Now, Tom might be on, he might be able to enlighten us.
Tom, do you have any information? I didn't think it was all grant covered, but.
It was. I don't believe we received the reimbursement yet, but I believe it was around thirteen thousand, if I'm not mistaken for that analysis.
So it was all covered?
Yes, it is to be covered. Like I said, I don't think we've gotten the actual money back yet. A follow-up of Mike Bowers. He said it was going to be coming back to us right around this time.
Do we pay anything on top of, for any type of, of cybersecurity?
We do. Um, it's built into other areas, for example, like our antivirus and like our firewall protection. We pay for all of that. Um, as part of our subscription services and like Tim says, you know, by doing this, we're not obligated to spend the money, but if we find out that some of the stuff that we routinely pay for can be covered by this, obviously we'll utilize those funds.
Thanks, Tom.
You're welcome.
Item P, uh, five C, PULC Letter Agreement Command Unit.
I could actually address both of those in Swoop. The PULC asked for a letter of agreement to recognize some of the statutes that were revised in the past year. Uh, we have language in both of these contracts called election of remedies and that's in the contracts so that uh, anyone who, any employee of the county who were to file an action against the county would not also have the opportunity to go through the grievance procedure and put their matter in front of an arbitrator. Uh, it's usually under the current language, the employee would select one or the other route and that would be it. A couple of statutes were amended this past year that eliminated or told us we could no longer do that. So these uh, letters of understanding are quoting those statutes very specifically and saying, we will comply with the statutes as well. We're not completely eliminating the language, but the statutes are going to prevail. Uh, it seems redundant, I understand, but I think it's a good practice, uh, to do this through a letter of agreement. So there is no misunderstanding. Should there be any issue that arises.
What brought light to this?
That change of the statutes. So it contradicted our language that's currently in the contract. So this cleans it up so that we are compliant with the new law.
Questions? Commissioner Scott? So that covers five C, one and two, correct?
Yes.
Um, item D, Hadley, did you have anything to add to that, guys? Sheriff under sheriff? Uh, D, Hadley Override.
And this actually comes from a conversation at the Budget Committee a week ago. Um, there was conversation about the Hadley Override. Obviously it would have, um, uh, some profound impact on the budget and our financial stability. And I don't want to necessarily speak for the committee, but the question was, uh, would the board wish to proceed with this for a May ballot? Nobody's telling me, no, that's wrong. So I'm assuming that's, that's the direction that we all wanted to do. Now, the language for a Hadley Override is very specific. It's written in statute. So there isn't a lot of work to be done there. But the committee's feelings were, if we're going to proceed with this, that we do need, uh, a pretty significant education period so that the voters will understand exactly what this is, what it does, what it means to their tax bill. Uh, so they, the committee felt that that would be plenty of lead time if we were to proceed between now and May to get the uh, information out to the public so that they can make an informed vote.
What's the deadline for that, Rick?
I don't know that one yet.
For me?
They've not released any documents for me.
Typically bracketed in, in February.
I want to say like sixty days. Probably, yeah.
You know how many is going to be on the May? Any idea?
The only thing that I've heard is the West Branch Road City School.
So will there be a cost? I guess I'll probably more information to come on this. So will there be a cost to us to put this on?
I'm not sure about this one. Is it school going to ask for a lot?
Yes.
There was some, there was some information you provided in here with the core and the the twenty-four hour road patrol.
That's February, right?
Yeah.
May election is a different category though. It was one of, I think, four, uh, dates that the state had set aside years ago, uh, for elections. And so I don't know if this would be, you know, in terms of how it's funded, a different category or not. I mean, is it going to fall like, uh, the August election and
The Bureau and ask them. I've had, I've had this conversation with them and I have my notes there in my office. I just, I can't remember what that one is.
I believe in the past, if the school is the only thing on the election name, they
They pay for it a hundred percent.
I believe, but things could have changed since the last time.
Well, the schools would have to if they're the only one on there. I mean, who else would pay for it?
But if the county goes on, then the county pays, the school doesn't. If we're on with them, the school doesn't pay, we pay. But something could have changed in legislation from the last time.
Commissioner Simmons?
I have a question. When the road patrol is going to be on in February, that's and the corps is going to be on in February. So that means we paid the whole thing.
There was a legal, I was just going to ask him for an update. There was a legal opinion that we got an email.
Right.
And it was kind of confusing.
Yeah. The way I understand the formula is we've got to pay the expense of, of our ballot. And if there's any other expense beyond that, that's where the school district will come in. It will not, and it's the thing that struck me as I was reading it, it's not a fifty-fifty split. So the, the lion's share will likely be paid by the county in a smaller amount by core.
So a township, actually I had a couple of them ask me this past week. So what is the gonna, well, how much is Core gonna have to pay of that? You said the
I don't know what that is.
Do we pay it upfront and then they reimburse us? Core? Have you had conversation? Are they aware of this?
They aware of what?
The cost that they're gonna have to pay some of this? Have they had to in the past? I guess I, I don't.
They've been, yeah, they have. Last time they were on. They, I can't remember what they paid, but yeah, they, they, they know they pay.
Okay. Commissioner Scott?
It's a basic part of the February ballot is the federal primary. Now, as that woman spoke at MTA, they're paying for, they're paying for everything.
They're paying for they're not going to pay.
They're not going to pay for our ballot.
Correct. Anything associated with the millages.
Right.
They're not paying.
Right. But I mean, they're already paying for all the help to be there.
Correct.
Okay, so all the election people are there, all, everything staged for the voter to come in. So the only thing the county is paying for is ballots. And the canvassers to go over those ballots. Well, the canvassers still have to go over the federal. So you're only looking at the paper.
Postage.
Anything associated with the ballots, yeah.
Yeah, postage. Well, but the same thing, so the absentee ballot goes out to, for the federal. You're gonna, aren't you gonna put the county ballot in, in the same envelope? Or no? You have sent two envelopes?
No, but it depends on what ballot they request.
Okay, but if they request them all, do they go in one envelope?
Then it wouldn't be paid. They're only getting one ballot.
Well, that's one of, that's, that's what I'm saying. There's one ballot.
Yeah.
It's got the primary on it. It's got the core on it and it's got the county on it, right?
There is going to be a Republican ballot, a Democrat ballot, a village ballot.
Okay, and core ballot too, or village is the core?
Well, there's four townships that are that do not have core. So
Right.
Those four townships will just have a sheriff.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
But if you know they request one ballot, it's going to be paid for if they get a
Okay, but the most of the expense of this election is covered by the federal. They, we're not, we're not taking on the whole cost.
Correct.
Yeah.
We've got the nine days of early voting.
Right, but that's all been covered by the federal government.
Commissioner David, can I add to this?
Go ahead.
Not to take any thunder away from Commissioner Simmons, but, uh, we had just a, a, a great budget meeting last week and Brendan probably touched base a little more on that. But to go along with what we're talking about specifically right here, uh, we invited all the stakeholders to our January twelfth meeting that, um, are going to have millages for the two thousand twenty-four. So they'll be all there January twelfth and I'd imagine some of those after we talk, discuss, strategize, you know, some of those are also going to want to go in May as well. So, um, I believe you got confirmation from all stakeholders, everybody's going to be there or
Everyone in the library has responded. I'll reach out to the library then.
So those will be some important things at that January twelfth meeting.
The only other thing I like to say is, when it comes to the May election though, Widmore Prescott Schools have not announced any kind of a thing. So how does that play in? Another question on the ballot, you have four townships that aren't going to have a school mileage. Question. Right? If only West Branch Road City Schools asked, then four townships in the county do not are not going to vote on that question because they're not in that school district.
That's right.
So if we put something else on, does only the other uh, nine townships vote on it? But no, you gotta, you gotta throw that question over all the other four townships. So then we would have to fund the we'd for sure have to fund four townships total elections.
I don't follow what you're saying.
Well, there's four townships here in the, in, in the county that belong to the Widmore Prescott School system.
That's correct.
There is no question from the Widmore Prescott Schools, but yet you have a countywide question. You've still got to give them the opportunity to vote on it. So Widmore Prescott, since they don't have a question on the ballot, they're not going to share in any cost of an election. We would have to pay for those four counties a hundred percent.
That's correct.
Unless somebody else wants to get on.
Okay, now there was something to say to my township this week. Um, are you sending out notices for the February?
For the early voting site, yeah.
Yeah, they said that the town's office was taking responsibility of, of all of that. So they were very pleased with that. It took some pressure off of them. The way it sounded.
Yeah. I'm trying and then I'm trying.
I'm getting a double message here, I think. The corps is going to be on the February ballot.
Right.
The road patrol mill is going to be on the February ballot. When I read that email on here, my understanding was Core doesn't pay anything. We pay it all. Is that correct?
It's, um, they're going to have some probably small percentage of the total. So they'll have something, but it won't be fifty-fifty. It will be majority of the county. But the county's expense is just, just for
Renting.
Just, you have for printing the ballot.
Yeah, anything.
For the total cost of doing a whole February election, the county's probably going to have what? Fifteen, twenty percent of the cost of doing it.
Going to be more than that.
Because the federal government's going to pay for all the help.
All the
Basically printing it, right?
Anything associated, anything associated with that ballot. That ballot style.
That is our responsibility. Yeah, it's going to be more than you think. I mean, we've seen the postage just for that, from the treasurer's office with, with, what was that? I, I don't, it was astronomical. Cause you're going to send out, you're going to send out notices beforehand.
But that's all getting reimbursed.
The state is going to, anything is so, okay, so anything associated with the February election, well, presidential primary or something election, the state is reimbursing. So I'm turning that postage for the notices and to get reimbursed. It's going to be huge, but it's going to be, it'll be reimbursed.
But it is a complete reimbursement.
So all the absentee ballots, who, who would be paying for all the absentee ballots to go on to all the people who want to vote absentee? Who pays for that? Us? Or the federal government?
For the
Okay, I just wanted to double check that.
Okay, so are there be more, because people are asking.
Yeah.
No, necessarily know what to tell them.
Charlie and I went to the MTA meeting and the lady from the Bureau of Law and Justice was there and she clearly, it took a while, but she clearly defined everything. And the, and the state is paying for everything, everything. I mean, right down to the custodian's going to sweep the hall afterwards. I mean, she just basically said, if there's any cost at all, you send it to us. So basically, this is what I'm saying. I think by printing a ballot for a county question is probably ten, fifteen percent of the total cost of the whole thing. And that, at that point is what we're going to split with Core. So we're going to have this huge bill to the state and the small bill here that we pay, and that's what we split with Core. We don't split the whole thing.
We'll, we'll, we'll see. I'm sure there'll be more information to come on that. Have they, has the state paid in the past? They did this, the, the reimbursement like they're doing?
Will they do for all presidential?
Okay.
But this is the first year with the nine day. This is what's costing so much money is this nine days. You know, yeah, they paid for everything before.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Uh, I, I, as far as the Hadley override goes, I mean, I, I think we have a little bit of time here. I, I would like to hear what the stakeholders before I feel comfortable making a decision about that. I would like if that January twelfth meeting to see what the stakeholders have to say, but that's, that's my opinion. So Commissioner Wilti?
Yeah, I want to add that. So a conversation that we had, um, at the budget meeting regarding the Hadley. So obviously we feel this is, could be a great opportunity for the county, but again, you've been hearing, you know, the the number one deal to make this work is, I mean, we have to have a clear, precise, consistent message that is, you know, educated to the public, the best way we can try to get that out there to as many people as possible. But, but then to go along with that, you know, the main thing is this, this Hadley um, is not in order to fill gaps in our, in our current budget. It is not made for us to receive this money so our county can continue to run at a level that's not sustainable. And we all know the reason that we're at, we're at now is because years and years we've run a county business at a level that is not sustainable, continuing each year to increase our debt. So the main thing is, is us as county commissioners is we need to say, and we need to have the, the strong heart talks of okay, well, if we don't get the Hadley, what else are we going to lose? How many more jobs are we going to lose? What other services are we going to lose? So this isn't something to try to, you know, again, fill gaps to be able to continue to do what we've been doing, because we know that's not working. This is, the key component of this is going to be if we don't get This is, the key component of this is gonna be, if we don't get this head lead, what more are we gonna lose? What more is our county residents gonna lose? And those are decisions that we need to talk about, and we need to get, we need to get that information out there. And it has to be, again, it has to be precise, we don't wanna make it too complicated, but that message has to be out there, and it has to be consistent. So.
It's, it's, I. It's gonna be difficult saying. Putting this on, um, without knowing what's gonna happen with the twenty-four hour road patrol. In February, I guess I, knowing those deadlines, I mean, we may have a, a tough decision there to make as well, depending on what happens in the February. Election. Um, cuz that will also significantly impact us if, if. That goes down in February. Um, I mean, I, I think we definitely have some tough decisions to make in the very near future. But uh, it'd be nice if, if our deadline was after the February election, to make decisions for May. Um, to make good strategic decisions. I guess we shall see, Commissioner Scott? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The budget committee wanted to put together a flyer and have it ready to hand out at the MTA meeting in February. And one of the things that the budget committee had discussed was putting that cut information, let services have the potential to be cut.
Uh-huh.
On the flyer to get that word out to the public during the MTA meeting. Is that something maybe you could put on your agenda to discuss soon, so that we can complete the flyer to get out for February?
I, I think maybe we need a, a list to, to look at before we actually have the discussion, if you're able to, to compile a list. And then maybe we can narrow it from there, as far as if this doesn't, what our next, what our three years looks like.
So what I would suggest, when we do our budget committee meeting in January, we can do a mockup there. I mean, everybody just needs to understand it is very preliminary, but I think it'll help guide where those significations need to be had. Um, and with the group on that budget committee, the, the, the members. Uh, looking at that, I think we'll have some very good conversation about what, what this means, and then can bring back a proposal to the board after that.
And you, you guys are doing that in the January meeting, right? Okay, so then we'll have some time between January and February for us to discuss.
Right, so you've got, you know, you'll have two, uh, well, one more committee home meeting yet in January after that meeting, so I think we'll have plenty of time.
Commissioner Simmons, did you have something?
Um, yeah. Along with the commissioner, we'll see, um, cuz we have to know ahead of time. If, if it doesn't pass, exactly what. Will have to be deleted, and, but if we are to maintain the service that we have right now. We really do need that millage to pass, otherwise, cuz we're still gonna be in debt next year if we don't make more cuts. But the big thing is, where would those come from?
But, right, and, and looking at a three-year plan as far as where we're at budgetary-wise.
That's where it'd be great if we're. I'm gonna put something on you now too. If you could come up with a three-year plan.
We have to have one.
Um, or what our plans are for the next three years, especially if this particular election does not pass.
Right, so we can give educated decisions, but then also looking at this road patrol village.
I understand, you're right.
That's huge.
Well, if, if the deadline, i- if this February election. Puts a crimp on the deadline, you gotta go for the, you gotta get it on it before the deadline. If you get into March and April and don't wanna put it on the ballot, at least you gotta pass the deadline, you got it there, you can always rescind it. I know it doesn't sound like.
We have this discussion.
Well, but if we're saying this ahead of time, if I say, come out and say, look, I'm gonna put it on, I'm gonna make my deadline. Get it up, get it, get it so it's reserved.
January.
January thirtieth, okay, January thirtieth. I get it on there, what I'm saying right now, in December, that there's a chance that in March, I'm gonna take it back off. But I can't wait until March to make the decision, I gotta make the decision to get it on January thirty, by January thirtieth. I think that's, I think that's, that's responsible to say that.
Right, that's, that's what I was under the understanding, it was misunderstood.
Now, when you say the headly override doesn't fill holes and things like that, it does. And you gotta be out for it. I know you're shaking your head. Thing is.
What do you mean by?
Hold on, hold on.
Thing is, is we ask the voters way back, everybody, every, every commission before us asked the. Asked the voters for one mil, or one whole half a mil, or whatever, and Headley rolled all that back. We budgeted for one mil, for a half a mil, but Headley rolled it back. So we had to find other money someplace else to fill the hole between the rollback and the, what we asked for. So we, we, we went to the, we went to go on to the tax revolving fund, year after year after year for.
Yep.
Twenty years we've been going to it.
Yep.
That Headley needs to fill that hole. It needs to get us away from the, those tax revolving funds. Instead of going to that, the Headley rollback could give us that, so it fills that hole. ARPA is doing the same thing, so we need to fill that hole. So. But passing the head lead will not increase services, that's the point you need to make.
It will maintain.
It will maintain.
Yeah, I think that point was, I think that point was.
It will maintain, because we, we are filling holes, we have no money. The, the culture in this county for twenty years, it's been, if there's a dollar in the bank, you spend it. That's, every other county has fund balance. And, you know, this goes back to when I first met the. Commissioner in Roscommon, his first question to me is, how big a fund balance you got? We don't have one dollar, we blow every dollar we got, and dollars we don't even have, we blow. Yeah, we're just, we're, we're practically. Gamblers Anonymous, I'll tell you, we just blow our money, I mean, we, we have been for, ever since I've been here. We've blown a hundred percent of the money, and probably, well, a hundred and ten percent, and we keep filling it back in with. I'll and Peter to PayPal. So Headley needs to fill those gaps and sustain business.
I'd like to add to that, so it's very clear, I understand what you're saying, but it's filling gaps. On a balanced budget, on a budget that's sustainable for the county. We've been running our county at a level that's not sustainable for how many years?
Right.
So we're really not filling gaps, we're, we're creating a, a fight, you know, a.
Some community.
Yes, yes, you know, so I, I understand what you're saying, but this is not gonna be filling gaps for. The past ways our county has operated, because it's very clear, almost a nine hundred thousand dollar negative cash. Cash in our, in our bank account.
Yeah.
You know, one, one point some million dollars trying to balance a budget. We are not sustainable, we are in the worst situation possible. At a county government we can be at, we're almost at a point where we're gonna be taken over by the state.
Yeah.
We all know, us five county commissioners, I think we're all on the same page realizing what we're doing, how we have to move forward. And the sad part of it is, is we have to make major, major change, do we wanna do the things that we've done? No, we don't. But we have to, for the sustainability of our county, for our residents, to be able to have a functioning county government. These huge changes need to happen, and we've gotta stay consistent, we've gotta stay strong. We've gotta stay united to continue this goal, and I think Commissioner Simmons is doing a fantastic job as the leader of our, our budget group. I think it's, it's a great thing that we're, we're doing this, and we all as commissioners have to continue, we're not gonna always agree on everything here. But we are in a horrible position, and we all know that we're not gonna continue to let that go the way it's been.
Right, but Headley roll, roll override would help us, would help us greatly.
Yes.
Would help with some stability, again, I think we're gonna have.
In addition.
Correct, I think there's gonna be some difficult decisions, we're, we're gonna have to see what happens in the February election, and, and uh. A- again, you, I, I work in the public, people are financially, financially struggling. So whatever decisions we make, um, a lot of thought. A lot of strategic planning, um. Needs to go into this. Um, there's some very, very, very important millages that are on there, that, that I think people feel very passionate about.
Yeah.
So I think we need to be very, very, very cautious with adding anything. Um. In my own personal opinion, I, 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 I'm hoping that things that we currently have, we can keep, I'm a little uneasy adding. Uh, to it, I understand it, a hundred percent understand it, but, but again, I work in the public, and people are, are struggling. Um, so asking for more, uh, monies. Uh, could definitely be an issue, I'm not in a position right now where I'm comfortable making a decision. Um, I'm out there this, this month at the townships, kind of hearing their, their, what they have to say with, with some pretty tough questions. Um, I think we need more information to come, so after your January meeting, I, I would like more information, Commissioner Simmons.
So with this headly, when you're, when you're housing, and, and it has happened in the past, it's happened with my property and everybody else's too. The property values have gone down, they have, they may be coming back up again right now, but um. With, with the, with that headly rollback, but when the headly rollback, when the property values go down, that rollback, we're paying less taxes. As far as county taxes it goes, because, um, the rollback is what we can, uh, that means. The property values aren't as much, and the taxable value is not as much, then we're not gonna get nearly as much money. And the only thing we wanna do is put it back to where it was originally.
Correct.
That's all we wanna do, um, and I understand everything's, everybody is strapped, uh. But also, I mean, if it's.
But you gotta ask the questions, you let the voter decide.
That's right, so then, when the voters make that decision, either yea or nay. Then we need to have our, our plan put together about what's gonna happen before the budget period, about. If it doesn't pass, I, I foresee more cuts coming, because we're still not.
Cuz costs are gonna go up.
I, I agree with you, Commissioner Scott, I'd let the voters decide, and I, but I also don't wanna put some of these other millages in jeopardy. By, by putting this out there.
Well, any renewal should go up, there shouldn't be any, if there's anything in existence now that needs to come back for. Another vote, we'd be, but be mess if we didn't put it up for renewal.
Oh, absolutely, I agree.
Yeah.
Just hoping that not adding to that puts one of them other millages, um, in jeopardy.
Well, the only way you're gonna get a headly rollback is ask for it. It's the only way you'll get it.
And if we don't.
Go ahead.
And if we don't put it on there, then we might as well start planning our layouts right now. For next year.
I think.
Because we're not gonna have a choice, cuz we can't spend more than we're taking in, we can't keep going back to that revolving fund.
I think there'll be more information to come on that, thank you.
What, when is that meeting?
January twelve. Yeah, that was posted.
Deadline.
That's it, we're, we're gonna make sure that this one's on Zoom too, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Cuz I had to call Tom, I had to text Tom last time, the first one was not.
Yes, it was.
So approve putting it on.
It was not posted, I had to call Tom and get the code, it wasn't on the website, sorry. So I was trying, I think I actually texted anyways, it was a little struggle there. I'm sorry.
Rec found some information over.
Uh, go ahead. Just the January thirtieth, if, I just wondered when the budget meeting was, to give enough time. January thirtieth is that date that we would have to have.
It after May?
Yeah, we still have.
Yeah, but it gives, it gives a committee the whole on a regular meeting.
Okay. We already covered the commission proposal, uh, overtime review, I seen this, I appreciate this.
So we'll do this once a month, so we concluded the November pay periods, so they're all listed here, uh, just in general. Sixteen point seven percent of the budget year now passed, uh, we only have one that's slightly. Ex, ahead of that schedule, that's in the sheriff's office overtime, that's at eighteen point seven percent of what we've budgeted. Uh, the other two that have overtime corrections and road patrol mileage are definitely within that sixteen point seven expectation. But we'll point out though, um, these percentages that you're seeing are based on what we've budgeted for this past year, but you can see from the three years prior. Uh, for instance, let's look at, uh, um, corrections, uh, last year total spent was sixty thousand one sixty-one. But by this time last year, they were already at nineteen percent, so you can see again what these trends are looking like. Um, it, nothing really, you know, startling, I did have a conversation with the sheriff yesterday about the importance of administering the overtime budget. And, um, you know, confident that putting this in front of people will help us do that. But it's good to see where we were in previous years, and, and you can see where the budget reductions are for sheriff's office, even though we're at eighteen point seven percent. That's about half of what we had spent this time last year, uh, while they were at seventeen percent. So of course, the budget was, or the actual is about twice as much as is budgeted for this year. The next thing that we see breaks down by employee who received overtime or comp time over the past couple of pay periods. Uh, and you can see them identified by employee number and by department, so you can see where those are. So with the sheriff's office, for instance, in this last pay period, you saw eighteen and a half total overtime hours, which got us to that, uh. The figure that we looked at on the previous graph. What this does though, I think, um, is gonna really help us when we get to the law enforcement committee meeting later today. Uh, is looking at the comp time both earned and used. And this is, I'm sure, gonna result in some conversation here in about the next hour or so, whenever we are able to kick off the meeting. These are numbers that don't necessarily show up in the expenditure side, so you're not seeing a line that says comp time was used in an amount. And you don't see a budgeted amount for it, this is used, but it's used as taking its time off, so it's just sort of absorbed into the, the wage line. So it's important, I think, to call this out, so while we maybe only had, uh, in the case of the road patrol village. We only had twenty-four overtime hours on the October twenty-ninth, November eleventh pay period, we actually had forty comp hours that were. So that's significant, so those are hours that are probably gonna be taken off, or need to be taken off. Um, by, gosh, I think we have a max cap at forty-eight hours, but I think we ask for these to be used. Uh, with a certain timeframe, so somebody's gonna be taking time off. Will that result in more overtime, and that's a conversation we'll have at law enforcement, to talk about how that works, how that dynamic works within the department. So that's what you see here, this is the November update, you got one a month ago with October, so you can kinda look at the months and compare them. Uh, next time you'll see this, it'll be shortly after the first of the year, we'll have the December pay periods on here, and you can see what trends may be developing.
I, I greatly appreciate this, I think we've had this discussion about, about seeing this for a period of time now, so this is appreciated. Mr. Scott.
Comp time is. Comp time is earned at an hour and a half, time and a half, so you get paid out as regular. It only takes five hours of comp times to make a day off, paid day off.
Seven and a half hours.
Seven and a half hours, uh, if you're working on an eight-hour day. Um. This, 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 when you first look at the first chart, it doesn't even. Because it's not recorded, it's overtime, so it, it appears that there's no overtime. But we're paying people out, this, the sum of money is the same, we're paying it out. And that's what we're talking, when we talk budget, is sum of money.
Yeah.
Not only the benefit of, of comp days. School resource officer, we thought, oh, what a grand, what a grand thing. When the kid, they don't have school because of ice, icy day, we're gonna have an extra cop on the road. But that doesn't happen, he takes comp day. So we don't gain an extra officer on the road, he doesn't have to take a paid time off day, he doesn't have to take a vacation day. He gets an extra day. If he can gain a, a day a week, which he is doing, he gets thirty extra days, there's thirty, thirty weeks of school. That's thirty extra days of off work, over and above vacation and paid time off. Now, that isn't, say, a month, that's more than a month.
Yes, it is.
Cuz there's only forty hours in a week, there's only, there's, with thirty days divided by five is six weeks. Paid time off, over and above vacation and paid time off.
That they can cash out, too.
That he can take the day off, that we pay him not to work.
But my question again is, is with the comp time, you can. Also cash that out.
Yeah.
And working.
Cash it off, yeah.
Yes, sure.
Correct?
Yes.
Tim, can you explain this?
It's really, uh.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly it, now, the contract says they can, uh, the employees and our unions can accrue up to, I think it's forty-eight comp hours. At any time, you don't get, uh, accrued comp hours beyond that, but if we get to the end of the fiscal year. But if we get to the end of the fiscal year on September thirtieth, if there's any money in those comp banks, then it is cashed out. So they're starting in February on October one. Uh, bottom line is, if they if they work the additional hour, it will be paid for. It might come in the form of time off, it might come in the form of overtime, but it will be paid for. Point here being, if you've got somebody with forty-eight hours, of course, they're gonna wanna use that or get it uh, scheduled, uh, so what do we have to do now? So somebody's gotta take a day or two off. Do we have to bring somebody else in now on overtime? And that's where you really start to see this begin to, to, what's the word for it? It's kinda like an avalanche of expenses all of a sudden, because now you've got somebody who's off, not working, you're paying, and now you've got somebody who has to work overtime, you're paying them time and a half. You can see how we can get into trouble really quickly if it's not administered.
So, I, I mean, the comp time, I hate to say is a way to hide overtime, but
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't show up, yeah, it doesn't show up in a line that you can say, okay, it was this many hours. And of course, we can see that now, we'll continue to report that to you, you can at least see the number of hours. Uh, but it shows up in just the general wage line, it doesn't pop. If somebody has to fill the shift, now you're gonna see it in overtime. So it's, it just, there's a lot of moving parts to it.
Commissioner, did you have something?
Well, I mean, this is something we've been talking about for a long time, that we need to continue to stay strong on this. So this comp time obviously costs our county money, and it really costs our money when this comp time, like, like you're saying, is affecting when overtime. So you're looking at two and a half times those costs. So this is an issue we've talked about, we need to continue talking about, and we, we've, we've gotta get this figured out. Um, it, it's
Why can't we, why can't we track our comp time as overtime? It is, it is earned as overtime.
It's not taken as overtime, that's why it's not tracked in the budget that way.
That's right.
All right, but as you can see here, we can call it out. We do have the ability to say, okay, what, how much comp time was earned, how much was taken? Okay, now you can see that. Now, we can even tie a wage to that, if you wanna see actual dollar amounts, that's pretty easily
I would.
Accomplished too. Uh, we've got the pay scales in there, very easy to plug that in, so you can see the, the value of those hours as well.
Yeah, I'd like to do some movement.
But we're gonna have more conversation about this at Law Enforcement Committee, um, um, you know, I it, it'll be good so you can hear from the sheriff and other sheriff, just exactly how they uh, administer this, how they keep track of it. And other plans they may have, uh, moving forward to make sure we don't end up in trouble here. And, and I know they've thought about it a lot, so I, I think it'll be a good meeting.
Commissioner Simmons.
So the chances are, um, when you, when you look at that and see they keep the comp time, it's creating somebody else to work overtime. Maybe the comp time's not a good thing, maybe it should just be people every time it's done with it.
Isn't that in their union contract? I mean, do we have control over this?
It'd be a mandatory subject of bargaining, so this will be the time to start
Conversation.
Conversation about that. Um, it's the way the Fair Labor Standard Act is set up, it's usually a decision made uh, by the employee and the employer with the employee really having the final say. If they wanna be cashed out for their comp time, they get cashed out in the story. But if they wanna accrue comp time, now the employer comes in and can set limits on that, which we've done somewhat with the contract. There is not a mandate within that federal law that we do comp time. So if this is something that you um, really wanna have a discussion on, we'll do that in closed session about uh, bargaining and just exactly how we approach that.
Doesn't, does our comp time have to be approved?
Yes.
By the department head?
I, again, I'm not exactly committed with the structure within the department, but there's a supervisor, somebody at supervisory level has to approve it, yes.
Okay, and you guys have talked about this the long, you have a
Stop right now.
Perfect.
Be right now.
Okay. I, I think there'll be more to come on that. I, I appreciate this, this, this.
I thought, I thought, well, this is nice.
Uh, public comment, is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Uh, motion to adjourn. Motion with support, ten thirty-five, we're adjourned. Thanks, guys.